Tuesday, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Time is six o'clock P.M. Item one, call to order. All aldermen are present. Sorry, that was roll call. Item two is roll call. All aldermen are present. Item three, pledge of allegiance and silent prayer in lieu of invocation, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you. Item four, reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Attachment number one. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion by Veneman to approve the minutes. I got a second by Penscover. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight As to zero Nays. Item five, consider for adoption a resolution for no mow May. See attachment two. This is all me. Do we have any questions or comments on no mow May? Would anybody like to recognize Elizabeth to speak? Mr. Penscover, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Wayland. My address is two-eleven Fifteenth Avenue North, Wisconsin Rapids. So, I don't know if you got my email, and then I sent everyone an email kind of a little bit more, giving some information. I am the project leader for Monarch and Pollinator Encouragement Project through Clean Green Action in Town, and also do a lot with Wild Ones of Central Wisconsin, which is a native plant organization. What we've seen with no mow May is obviously that it works sometimes and sometimes it doesn't. It really depends upon, you know, the specifics and the weather. Last year was very warm, and we had grass growing in April, and, you know, when people just didn't mow until June, it ended up being, I think, a problem for, you know, for some of the people even, and maybe they were kind of left with kind of some uncomfortableness with that. But what we've tried to encourage people is that, you know, there's really no size fits all, and we've actually learned a lot, and maybe we're kind of considering and hoping to go towards a slow-mow summer, and that which, you know, would be, we'd like a proclamation to, you know, and education for the city. I included in the email the website for the city of Calcana, and, you know, they really provide their residents with a lot of, you know, science-based information and tips on how to approach, you know, pollinator-friendly lawns and, and reducing mowing and things like that. For us in the city, last year, I have a native plant garden. I mowed during May, you know, but I only mowed like once or twice because I just wanted to take the, you know, the top one-third of the grass off instead of letting my grass get to, you know, knee height and stuff. It was healthier for my lawn, it was healthier for my plants. We were vegetable garden gardeners too, and my apple trees definitely appreciate all the bees. So that's what we're kind of looking for is, is going towards a little bit of a different system. I usually have put up displays at McMillan Library trying to educate people. I know Emily on the city's website has had a wonderful website. It's kind of hard to find sometimes for the no mow May, but, so that's kind of, you know, what we're, we're looking for as far as an ask, so, just a little bit of a change in
So, if we're changing direction, the resolution in front of us today is the same as previous where we would not do, we would not require individuals to mow their lawn until June fourth.
That, that is what is in front of you as far as, you know, that's what was put on the agenda. I don't have any control over that, so, so I guess what I was asking is maybe that we, that we look at maybe not doing that, and, and possibly, I think the, I think the ordinance is six inches right now for the grass height, and I was, you know, maybe asking for us to, you know, increase that to seven or eight. I think there's other things in the city that, you know, are a little bit more of a nuisance than seven or eight-inch grass, you know, that are ordinance violations and stuff, so, but.
Thank you, because I, I agree. I think the ideal pollinator is native wildflowers and flowering trees. What we get when we do not mow our ornamental grass is our neighbors usually applying more fertilizer and pesticides, which causes runoff, which is worse for our environment than actually mowing our lawn. So I would be more inclined to support a program that offers those native wildflowers or encourages people and maybe provides seeds to do a small portion of their lawn in those wildflowers that does help the bees and the pollinators versus a blanket no mow, any grass.
We do actually, the, we do have the ordinance in the city that we are allowed to have native, native plantings, and as long as they're maintained and, you know, that's, you know, that's allowed. One of the things that I noticed at several of the properties that had gotten, you know, the meadow, and that was that they were having trouble with some of the invasive species, you know, coming in and, you know, and so then they just flower and go to seed, and that just, you know, increases, you know, the problems because that's not helping any of the native pollinators and, you know, butterflies, bees, you know, anything like that, so.
I just want to clarify real quick, Justin. I just put this on because it's been here for a couple of years now, so I want a direction from the council as to how we want it to proceed forward. Justin, go ahead.
Thanks. I was going to kind of echo what Matty had said. I totally support the pollinators, but it did seem like it became a bit of a counterpartitive last year, and I'm wondering if we may be more successful if we have more of a campaign for flowering trees like we did years ago. We have beautiful Opa trees throughout the city because of a campaign years ago to support the Riverview Hospital, so I wonder if something like that could be done, especially as some of these Opa trees are starting to get to the age where they're, they're dying, so it's probably a perfect time to, to have a new campaign to have more sponsored, you know, plantings of these flowering trees maybe in the city.
Yeah, and I will draw your attention to our, the city's spring plant sale. We have some, you know, lovely crabapple trees in there, maple trees, cypress, you know, that's available until April fifteenth, so, so, I mean, there is that that we've been doing every year. I'm not sure how long that's been going on, but we do do that spring plant sale, or the tree sale, so I, I agree too. The crabapples are especially bird-friendly and insect-friendly trees, so.
Thank you. Patrick?
So the first year that no mow May came up was actually a surprise at how many people had participated in the no mow May.
Yeah.
And it is something that I believe is a good thing for our community. It is well-received, a lot of people do it. I haven't heard one complaint about no mow May.
Okay.
I do agree that last year was a special year. Maple sap started flowing over a month earlier than normal, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the no mow May, and if you guys want to do a slow summer thing, that's fine.
In your motion, do you want it to include that they register and have a sign in their yard, or that anyone can do it in the city?
Last year, we had it open so that you didn't have to register or have it, so I think that's the easiest way to go, and, yeah.
So include that in your motion? Okay. I got a motion by Delaney and a second by Katna. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, six As to two Nays. All right. Item six, consider for adoption a charter ordinance changing the mayor's term from two years to three years. Seeing none? Oh, I have a motion by Palmquist, seconded by Delaney, or sorry, what is your?
To approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Delaney. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight As to zero Nays. Item seven, consider for confirmation Mayor Zachar's appointments to various committees, commissions, and boards. Attachment four, Parks and Recreation Commission, Julie Tim, four-ten Grove Avenue, would be a regular member to replace Chris Bartek, term expiring five-one-two thousand twenty-eight. And Zoning Board of Appeals, Chuck Peters, at thirty-thirty Sixteenth Street South, is appointed as a regular member to replace Michael Tim to a term expiring eleven-one-two thousand twenty-six. Thank you. What are your wishes? I get a motion by Delaney to approve, seconded by Palmquist. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight As to zero Nays. Item eight, discuss and set April business and reorganizational council meetings. So right now, we're working on, or we kind of set it out to be April tenth for the last meeting, that we would be together as a, or you would be together as a council to close up any business after those committee meetings, and then on the fifteenth, which is the normal meeting, we would have the first meeting of the new council, and that would be a reorg and informational meeting at that time. Any questions? All right, so, we're all good on it?
What was the reorg again? What date?
April fifteenth.
Oh, the new council.
Yeah.
And the first one was when?
April tenth.
Okay, gotcha.
All right. Seeing nobody in disagreement, I will move on. Item nine, consider for adoption the actions of the Planning Commission at this meeting held on March third, two thousand twenty-five. Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. The Plan Commission met at four P.M. in the council chambers. A quorum of members was present, and a list of others in attendance is available in our office in the Clerk's Department. The meeting was called to order at four P.M. Item one was approval of the report from February third. There was a motion by Davin to approve the report, seconded by Tao. That motion carried six-zero. Item two was a public hearing in action on a request from W.R. Industrial Property LLC to amend Chapter eleven of the zoning code, specifically Appendix A to allow general repair in the heavy industrial M-two district with a conditional use permit. Staff provided a summary of the request recommending approval. Public hearing opened at four oh five P.M. A list of those speaking in favor or against is noted. Public hearing closed at four oh seven. There was a motion by Palmquist to approve the request to amend the zoning ordinance as noted previously. That motion carried six-zero. Item three was a public hearing in action on a request from W.R. Industrial Property LLC for a conditional use permit to establish general repair at eighty Oliver Street parcel identified, which falls within the heavy industrial M-two district. Staff provided a summary of the request. Approval was recommended, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. Public hearing opened at four eleven P.M. Speaking in favor or against are noted in the minutes. That public hearing closed at four thirteen P.M. There was eventually a motion made by Palmquist to approve the request, as noted, subject to the three conditions outlined in the staff report. There was a second by Davin. That motion carried six-zero. Item four was a public hearing in action on a request from Wisconsin Rapids Public School Districts for an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, specifically map seven-point-two, future land use map, to reclassify twenty-nine-eleven Washington Street from a mixed land use classification of parks and open space and government slash public institutional to solely a government-public-institutional land use at an unaddressed parcel identified from residential land use classification to a government-public-institutional land use classification. Staff provided a summary of the request. There was a public hearing at four twenty P.M. A list of those speaking in favor or against is noted. That public hearing closed at four twenty-two P.M. Again, staff recommended approval of this request along with item five. There was a motion by Davin to approve the request for the ordinance amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, specifically seven, map seven-point-two, as previously notified. That motion carried six-zero. Item five was a public hearing in action on a request from the Wisconsin Rapids Public School District to rezone twenty-nine-eleven Washington Street, which is Washington Elementary School, from a mixed zoning classification of Park and Recreation P-one district and Institutional I-one district to solely an Institutional I-one district, and to rezone an adjacent parcel identified from a mixed residential R-two district to solely an I-one district. A public hearing opened at four twenty-four on the item. Speaking in favor and against are none. That public hearing closed at four twenty-five as well. There was a motion by Palmquist to approve the request to rezone the parcel identified, seconded by Maroots. That motion carried six-zero. Item six was a public hearing in action on a request from the Wisconsin Rapids Public School District for a conditional use permit to amend and perform recreational site improvements at twenty-nine-eleven Washington Street as well as an adjacent parcel, which is noted as Washington Elementary School. Staff provided a review of the request recommending approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. There was a public hearing at four thirty-two P.M. Those speaking against or in favor are noted. That public hearing closed at four thirty-five P.M. There was a motion by Palmquist to approve the request, subject to the three conditions outlined in the staff report. A second by Tao. That motion carried six-zero. Item seven was a request by the Wisconsin Public School District for a public hearing in action for a conditional use permit to perform recreational site improvements at twenty, or two-twenty-one Eighth Street North, Howe Elementary School. Staff provided a review of the request recommending approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. There was again a public hearing on this item as well at four thirty-nine P.M. Nobody spoke in favor or against. That public hearing closed at four thirty-nine. There was a motion by Davin to approve that request, seconded by Maroots, subject to the three conditions outlined in the staff report. That motion carried six-zero. Item eight was a public hearing in action on a request from Wisconsin Rapids Public School Districts for a conditional use permit amendment to perform recreational site improvements at four seventy-one Grove Ave., as well as an adjacent parcel that's known as Grove Elementary School. Staff recommended approval of the request, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. There was a public hearing that opened at four forty-two P.M. Those speaking in favor or against are noted. That public hearing closed at four forty-four. There was a motion by Maroots to approve the request, subject to the three conditions outlined in the staff report. Seconded by Tao. That motion carried six-zero. Two more items, guys. Number nine was a public hearing in action on a request from the city of Wisconsin Rapids to amend Chapter eleven of the zoning ordinance, specifically Article sixteen relating to landscaping and buffer yards. Staff provided a summary of the request recommending approval. There was discussion amongst the, the commission. Eventually, a public hearing occurred at four fifty-eight P.M. Speaking in favor and against were none. That public hearing closed at the same time. There was a motion by Palmquist to approve the zoning amendment as presented, seconded by Davin. That motion carried six-zero. Item ten, the last item, was adjournment. There was a motion by Davin to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Zachar. That motion carried six-zero. The meeting adjourned at four fifty-nine P.M. With that, I respectfully submit them for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve the report of the Planning Commission.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that the landscaping ordinance was attached to the council packet. I don't see it anywhere.
If it was not attached, we can certainly, there's no applicant on the item. It's a city request, so we can just pull it out for the approval, and we will bring it back to council solely next month on the tenth. Thank you.
Alderman, my motion is such.
All right. I got a motion by Austin for the approval of the minutes, holding out item nine until next council meeting, and I got a second by Delaney, who, are you, you're okay with the amend? Yep. All right. So motion by Austin, seconded by Delaney. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight As to zero Nays. Item ten, consider for adoption the actions of the standing committees of the common council as follows. Finance and Property Committee meeting held March fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Jake?
Thank you. Finance and Property Committee met at five P.M. on Tuesday, March fourth, two thousand twenty-five, in the council chambers at City Hall. All members of the Finance and Property Committee were present, except Alderperson Veneman, who is excused. Alderperson Penscover attended in place of Alderperson Veneman. Item one was called to order. I called the meeting to order at five o'clock. Item two was considered for approval of temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages license for assumption Catholic schools. Four forty-five Chestnut Street for a talent show event to be held on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, from seven P.M. to ten P.M., and Saturday, April twelfth, from five P.M. to ten P.M. It's moved by Penscover, seconded by Delaney to approve the license. Motion carried three-zero. Item three, consider requests from D.R. Mart LLC, Harrah Canal Agent for Retail Class A Fermented Malt Beverages and Retail Class A Intoxicating Liquor Licenses for the premise located at eleven-fifty-one West Grand Avenue. Moved by Delaney, seconded by Penscover to approve the request. Motion carried three-zero. Item four, consider requests from Sri Ashapuri, DBA Great Bar, Mitesh Kumar, Rana Agent for Retail Reserve Class B Intoxicating Liquor License for the premise located at thirty-five-fifty-three Eighth Street South. It's moved by Delaney, seconded by Penscover to approve the request. Motion carried three-zero. Item five was out of the bills. It's moved by Katna, seconded by Delaney to approve checks number two-four-seven-five-two to two-five-one-one-two in the amount of eight million five hundred and seventy-two-thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Motion carried three-zero. Item six was set next meeting date, the next regular meeting of the Finance and Property Committee. It's scheduled for Tuesday, April first, at five P.M. Item seven was adjournment. Moved by Penscover, seconded by Delaney to adjourn. Motion carried three-zero, and the meeting adjourned at five oh five P.M. And with that, I make a motion to approve these minutes.
All right. I get a motion by Katna to approve the minutes, seconded by Penscover. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight As to zero Nays. Item B, Public Works Committee held on March sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, March sixth, two thousand twenty-five, in the council chambers. All members were present, except Alderperson Penscover, who was excused. Alderperson Pollock sat in for Alder Penscover. The meeting was called to order at five oh two. First item was to review the Engineering and Street Department monthly, monthly activity report, which was reviewed. Item three, review and consider modifications to the garage and recycling collection services, or garbage, sorry, and recycling collection services. There was a motion by Palmquist and seconded by Austin to approve implementing a garbage and recycling collection fee on one-one-two thousand twenty-six for properties that are currently receiving this service. That motion carried three-zero. Item four, discuss the permit and two-hour parking in the west side downtown area and consider a full review of the current parking situation. Existing parking options were discussed, and current usage of permit parking stalls was provided. The committee requested the information on permit parking be advertised to make sure people are aware of the permit parking, or that it exists. The committee would consider changes to the parking at the public lot at Third Avenue South and Johnson Street at next month's meeting, and no action was taken. Item five, consider modifying the permit parking in the Dixon W-two lot to reduce permit parking stalls and increase number of limited-time parking stalls. Motion by Austin, seconded by Palmquist, to convert stalls along West Grand Avenue to permit parking other than the ADA stalls, and convert the center aisle stalls to two-hour parking in conjunction with the proposed parking lot reconstruction project in two thousand twenty-five. That motion carried. Item six, review and consider setting fees for contractor and non-resident compost site passes. Motion by Palmquist, seconded by Austin, to approve fees for the two thousand twenty-five as presented, and that motion carried. Item seven, consider a preliminary resolution for public work and improvements on Apricot Street between Fifteenth Street North and Seventeenth Street North, proposed for construction in two thousand twenty-six. Motion by Pollock, seconded by Palmquist, to approve the resolution, and that motion carried three-zero. Item eight, consider a preliminary resolution for public works and improvements on Fifteenth Avenue North between West Grand Avenue and High Street, proposed for construction in two thousand twenty-seven. Motion by Palmquist, seconded by Austin, to approve the resolution, and that motion carried three-zero. Item nine, consider a preliminary resolution for public work and improvements on Sixteenth Avenue North between West Grand Avenue and High Street, proposed for construction in two thousand twenty-seven. Motion by Austin, seconded by Palmquist, to approve the resolution. That motion carried three-zero. Item ten, review and consider a policy for on-street parking. Motion by Palmquist, seconded by Austin, to approve the on-street parking policy, and that motion carried three-zero. Item eleven, review the referral list. The list was reviewed, removing item six. Item twelve was set the next date, which was scheduled for Thursday, April third, at five P.M. in the council chambers, and we adjourned at six oh four P.M. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the report of the Public Works Committee, holding out item five.
I'd like to hold out three.
Who was that?
Jake.
Three, and Ryan, five.
Ryan's holding out five, Jake's holding out three. All right, I got a motion by Austin to pass the minutes, holding out item three and item five, and I have a second by Delaney. Any other questions or comments? We're good? Yeah?
Do I need to go back? I'm sorry, I thought you were voting.
Nope, I am going to vote now. All right. All right, all those in favor, or go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight As to zero Nays. Item three, Ryan. My fault, sorry. Jake?
Thank you. So I watched the Public Works meeting. There's, there's a lot there in terms of changing the way that we currently do our refugee and recycling services. A little history on this, I think it was about five, six years ago, we made the transition from our regular garbage pickup to the bins. It was a very tough transition. There was a lot of residents that came to speak on it. It took some time to iron that out, and we got out of that, our current system, which is now what we use, what's being proposed is essentially- got out of that, our current system, which is now what we use, what's being proposed is essentially a fee based on the service and taking it out of the levy or the property taxes, so that everybody pays the same fee. My, my issue with this is essentially, this is an argument against property taxes, which you could speak about one way or another, but that is how they work. If you are, have a higher assessed value, you pay more for not only garbage, but you pay more for police. You pay more for fire. You pay more for snow removal. You pay more for all services and your portion of city infrastructure. The entire levy and budget as a whole. So to pick one thing out, such as the garbage and recycling, make it fee-based, I think is going away from the standard practice of what the city does, and I believe it could open up quite the debate of people who may not know this is going through tonight, but would have quite a bit to say about it if. I, I encourage everyone to watch the public works meeting. I also got an email from a resident that had questions and comments. I can't answer them all, as I don't have the knowledge, and I did not bring this forward, but I'll read, read the letter, and then perhaps someone can answer it. One question they had was if these are considered added services with added fees, could residents opt out of the services? If so, are you concerned about code enforcement issues related to trash trending up, or people tossing their trash in other people's bins? Both scenarios discussed in the meeting, one hundred and fifty thousand dollar home and a two hundred thousand dollar home showed an increased cost to homeowners with the cost dropping with increased property value. So this would increase costs for many residential property owners and most deeply affect those who are already struggling to adjust to higher property taxes following the reevaluation, including older residents living alone or with a spouse in a modest home who are concerned about their social security check covering increased property taxes. Would a year in which many residents saw an increase in property taxes be the right time to propose a change that would increase their cost further? I think the city would receive overwhelming criticism, criticism when residents discover this fee on their property bill next year. I have additional concerns about the equity of charging large homes with generally large households and large volumes of trash. The same fee as small homes with generally small households and small volumes of trash, but this comes second to the offensive nature of discussing additional fees to residential property owners who already saw a significant increase to their property taxes this year. I understand the complexity of this issue and the arguments in favor for this change, but they hope that we'll consider their comments when making a decision on this topic. So there was a couple of questions in there. First one being if residents could opt out. Are we worried about code enforcement issues? And is it the right time to change it when residents are already seeing an increase in their costs? So I don't know who those questions go to, to be answered, but I figured we have enough people who are knowledgeable in the room that hopefully someone can speak to those.
I don't know.
I guess there hasn't been any conversations about that. I guess my opinion is, is that if you are residential property currently, you would continue to pay for the service that you're currently being provided. I don't think they would. I guess I can't speak to it because I haven't referred to it, but I don't think waste management would come and do it for a lesser fee than what we're charging.
But people could see what they pay go up, and those with higher assessed values would go down. If, if we're parsing out specific services, that's essentially the result. Is that correct, Tim?
Yeah, based on the analysis I did, you know, obviously with, you know, with, if we were to implement a fee, obviously we have to reduce the levy by the amount we budgeted for garbage collection in two thousand fourteen. So the levy would go down by that much. The, the mandatory minimum would be seven hundred and eighty-four thousand. And then, obviously, then that lowers the tax rate. This is all based on twenty-five budget numbers. And so then, if, with the reduction in taxes, but with the increase in the fee, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home would see an increase of about seventy-nine dollars. And for my example, I use a two hundred thousand dollar home, and it would increase fifty-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
Thank you. And what happens when we take away from the levy and it goes lower? Is that able to be undone and then raise the levy back to reinstitute the way it currently is? Or once it becomes a fee and we take it out of the levy, does the levy go down?
Right, well, yeah, I mean, it'd be, once you kind of make this transition, it's, you're adjusting your levy limit, you're, you're subtracting that off, so I don't think there's, I don't know for sure, but I doubt there's a way that you can say we're gonna eliminate the fee now, reinstall that money.
Correct.
I think it would just be based that you're going to a fee, and that's what you're gonna do for foreseeable future.
So my understanding is making this move, decreasing the levy, there would be no way to turn that back under state law.
Not that I'm aware of. I've never seen that as an option, but I could look into it, but.
Yeah, I, thank you. I just wanted to confirm, because that was my understanding as well. So when we take away from the levy, we essentially can't get that back. So a lot of concerns with this. I think it works well as is. I've never received a complaint on it. It's pretty standard. I don't even think a lot of people know we're considering this tonight. And as a resident in my district stated, a lot would find out when they receive their tax bill next year, or if they're watching this meeting tonight. So I am strongly against this.
Patrick?
Okay, so this is something that it is a fee-based service, and the people that are using the service would be paying for that service. It would make it fair, because the people that are using it are the ones that are paying for it. And in my opinion, it's the most fair way to run a service, is that somebody that uses the service actually pays for it. And I don't believe that any of the other communities, there's a lot of communities in Wisconsin that have gone to this fee-based service. It's actually better for the community as far as the tax levy. Something would happen to pop up that we couldn't pay for. We wouldn't be taking it out of the levy. It would be paid for through the fee-based service, so. Also, nothing was finalized on this. This was something that would come back for discussion over the next several months. So a, a yes vote doesn't mean that this is going through and it's finalized. A yes vote just means that you guys are gonna talk about it until you get everything situated, and that's all.
Matty?
The, to answer the can people opt out question, no. Our ordinance says that the city shall provide the garbage and recycling containers, polycarts, for all of the properties listed. So there's no way for somebody to say, I don't want that. We will be providing them. My second question is, if we, I was under the impression, based on our conversation, that there would be a decrease in what residents saw on their property tax bill, because we're taking that out from the levy. It's no longer being paid for and no longer than being funded by our overall property taxes, and it would show up in a different form. Is that not the case, Tim? Would we have the same, would I, let's just say my property taxes are twelve hundred dollars. I would have twelve hundred dollars plus eighty if we went with this?
Right, if you, if you look at the, the attachment that was in the minutes, the analysis I did, you know, with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, they're currently paying one thousand four hundred and two dollars in property taxes. That's with garbage collection. Now, if you look at section four, where, you know, we reduce the limit, the levy by the amount that the state mandates that we subtract off what we budgeted in two thousand fourteen for garbage collection. You see that lowers the rate, so now they're paying one thousand three hundred and twenty-two in property taxes. So their property taxes go down, but then the fee is then added on to the, usually the garbage collection fee is added on as a separate line item, like a special assessment would appear on the property tax bill. So the taxes will go down, but then the fee gets applied.
Perfect, thank you.
Justin?
So I agree with Alder and Delaney that this is a more fair way to provide the services. And based on, you know, the size of, of the current cans, you're still somewhat limited, so it's not like somebody can take full advantage of it and have twice as much garbage as their, as their neighbor, because the cans kind of limit that. My question would be, does this allow other businesses and nonprofits to participate in the garbage pickup as well? No?
Paul?
Would they be able to opt into this?
I think the intent of the motion was to keep the garbage and recycling collection strictly to residential properties. Originally, the question was brought forth by a trailer park, or sorry, a resident of a trailer park. And those parts, properties are considered commercial properties. My recommendation or our conversation was to not open that door, because all of a sudden, how are you gonna differentiate one commercial property versus another commercial property? So I think the, the, the recommendation was to just continue to provide the service as we currently are, so it would be to residential properties for or less.
Jake?
Thank you. So the motion by Palmquist, seconded by Austin to approve implementing a garbage and recycling collection fee on January first, two thousand twenty-six, for properties that are currently receiving this service, motion carried three-zero. So Patrick just mentioned that it was something he didn't believe would go into effect immediately.
Okay, so yes, this is something that is, it's not gonna go into effect until January first. Something that has a lot of work to be done, and ordinance still has to be written on it. And any details have to be sorted out as to how this gets implemented. So this is just the first step of this.
So this would indeed be a formality to work forward towards something like this? Or, yeah, I'm asking you, because that, the motion was to make it effective January first.
Right, I, an ordinance will need to be done, especially if you want to, you know, treat it as a service or fee that then is added on to the tax roll, I'm assuming, if it's not paid, or, or it actually would be paid, be put on the tax roll and paid out of the first installment. So yes, I'm recommending that an ordinance be done, so I take this as directing staff to come up with the ordinance and/or any attendant policies that might be necessary, and then that will come back to public works.
Thank you. I, I still caution everyone to vote for moving this forward. I think there's a lot of concerns with this, one of the big ones being in the levy. And once you reduce that, yes, property taxes go down, but essentially, as state law stands now, we are adopting that move forever, with no way to go back on it. I, again, if, if you guys have been receiving a bunch of calls about this particular issue and a bunch of complaints, I'd, I'd like to hear them, but I think this may have stemmed from a, a single or a small group. And we need to consider the entire city and the way things are being done now, the reduction of the levy, and then the equity of it all, because if we start parting out services that the city provides, as I mentioned, you know, you can, you can do garbage and recycling, but this is the same argument for every city service that's provided, police, fire, snow removal, et cetera. We're gonna pick this one, and I'm, I'm not saying, you know, property taxes are perfect, but it is the way that we operate. So I, I would caution against this, and I will not be voting for it.
Matty?
As I, I stated during the public works meeting, that I made this motion, knowing that in order for it to go through, we needed to talk about it with the budget. Thankfully, this year, we are talking about the budget much sooner, so we will have the opportunity not only to talk about our overall goal for the departments and how we expect as a council to see the budget come to us, but the restrictions and limitations we want to put on it. This would be a part of that conversation before we get to the point of instructing staff to write an ordinance. So I think we will have the conversation of if we want to decrease the levy and put this on, or what the impacts of that would be to the budget and compare them, and then make a decision from there.
Dean?
So then in effect, are we tabling this? I mean, pardon?
I said there hasn't been a motion or anything.
Well, no, but we've held that item out of the, we've held that item out. It was approved, and I don't see where it says the concept is approved. I mean, we approved the ordinance, but we don't have a number attached to it, so.
Right, there is no ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, so there's nothing to vote on then, because we have, unless we put a motion to direct you to create an ordinance, but.
I would say if this motion fails, then you're saying you don't want to go this route, and we're not gonna put the time into doing an ordinance and, and that, so.
So what is the motion? What would the motion be?
Anyone can make any motion they want on this.
And relating to that?
You can make the same motion that you have here, which, as I said, there, there needs to be an ordinance done to really effectuate this, so.
Okay.
All right. Matty?
I'd like to.
Go ahead, sorry. What's your?
Like to make a motion to refer this to the committee of the whole, for our budget discussion.
All right. And Justin, you hit a second before you heard the motion. Did you?
I still second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Palmquist, second by Pluist, to move this to, forward to the committee of the whole meeting that we're gonna have for budget discussions in May. Okay. We have not set a date for that yet. Yeah, that's good. Thank you. All right. So we have a mo, Ryan?
Yeah, I would just, I want to reiterate, there, there's probably a lot of folks out there, as far as the commercial property owners, industrial, that may not realize that they are essentially subsidizing our garbage collection by paying their property taxes as well. So we talk about awareness. I think, again, this is the most fair way to be charging our residents. Those that are using the service are paying for it, and nobody else, obviously, like commercial businesses. And when you talk about commercial, you're also talking about trailer parks, you're talking about multifamily buildings, things like that, that are essentially contributing to fund those services but aren't getting them. So that's why we went this direction. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. We got a motion by Palmquist, second by Pluist. Go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes seven a's to one nay. All right, item five, Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. This kind of pertains to both four and five, but five kind of offers a history to what I'm trying to hit on here. So currently, the city has, well, it was twenty-nine permitted parking stalls in the downtown west side area. With the actions that we took on the Dixon lot, I think that's reduced by seven, so you're probably talking about, you know, twenty-two-ish permitted stalls. If you take a look at the history of those that have purchased permits for those stalls, you know, the last, the last essentially six. you know, the last, the last essentially six, seven years, there's only been one purchase, one purchase for a permitted parking stall. And I think a lot of that has to do with the cost of these permits. It was it was brought up in the meeting, I I think it's around a hundred and fifty-six dollars with with the sticker to get one of these permitted parking stalls. And, you know, that that's a lot of money for for an annual parking stall, if you ask me. And i- if you look at the history, you know, one person over the last seven years were were really not generating much revenue. So with the issues that are occurring downtown with parking and the vast number of tickets that are that are that are being issued down there, I think it would behoove us to consider lowering that that permit parking fee substantially. It's it's not going to hurt us as far as revenue is concerned because right now it's just one purchase, one purchase a year at this time. So I think, and I can make a formal referral if needed, but I think finance should definitely take this up and and look at slashing this permit fee substantially, I would say by half or two-thirds. So I just wanted to bring some awareness to that. And I'll make a motion to approve item five.
Patrick.
So these twenty-two parking spots are set aside and only one person is using them, is that what you're saying? Is is this a, I'm sorry for, I I went to this meeting, but I I had a a question on the time. Is does the permit, are these parking spots open like at night or on the weekends?
So the the permit stalls in the downtown are seven AM to five PM Monday through Friday. So that's the permitted time available. Otherwise, outside of that time, they are open.
Okay. And you're reducing them by seven stalls, so there's going to be twenty-two, is that correct? For one permit? Still?
Well, my hope would be many more people would purchase a permit if we reduce the fee. Yeah, all right.
All right, I got a motion by Austin, seconded by Palmquist. What's that? I know. Justin.
I just wanted to speak to the the permitted parking stalls. I know the the stalls one through eight are going to remain permitted as well. And I I know a lot of people that work in the Riverlock building utilize those permitting stalls, my spouse included, so I'll probably abstain from 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 this vote because of that. But I also just want to make a note if there could be maybe better signage in front of those permitted stalls because I know it's not easily identified and the public people that don't have a permit often utilize those permanent stalls. So if we could maybe do something better about the signage for for those that are still going to be permitted. That's all.
All right, we got a motion by Austin, seconded by Palmquist. Any further questions or comments? Go ahead and cast your votes. I got six As and two abstentions. Motion passes. All right. Item C, Human Resource Committee meeting held March sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Delaney.
The Wisconsin Rapids Human Resources Committee held a meeting on Tuesday, March sixth, two thousand and twenty-five at three thirty PM in the council chambers at City Hall. All committee members were present. Also present were Mayor Zacher, City Attorney Sue Schill, sorry about that, IT Manager Tyler Mickelson, Chief Ben Gudrow, and Human Resources Manager Ryan Hartman. Item one was called to order, Chairperson Delaney called the meeting to order at three thirty PM. Item two, discuss a referral from Chairperson Delaney regarding an employee recognition program for employees of the city. Discussion took place, no action was taken. Item three, discuss and consider for approval, a request from Mayor Zacher for organizational restructure, removing Wisconsin Rapids Community Media from the Information and Technology Department and having the multimedia coordinator report directly to the mayor. See supporting documents. Motion by Pollock, seconded by Delaney to approve a request from Mayor Zacher for an organizational restructure, removing Wisconsin Rapids Community Media from the Information and Technology Department and having the multimedia coordinator report directly to the mayor. Motion carried two to one. Item four, discuss and consider for approval, the hiring of a temporary firefighter within the fire department due to extended leaves in the department. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Pluist to approve the hiring of a temporary firefighter within the fire department due to an extended leave with an end date of twelve thirty-one twenty-six or upon the return of the employee after the leave is complete, whichever occurs first. Motion carried three zero. Item five, the committee may vote to go into closed session under section nineteen point one, paragraph one, paragraph E, Wisconsin statutes, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the committee will discuss negotiation and bargaining strategy under labor negotiations with WRPPA and IAFF and may discuss terms of successor labor agreements with WRPPA and IAFF. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Pluist, go into closed session, roll call, vote, stake, and motion carried three zero. In closed session, the committee discussed negotiation and bargaining strategy regarding labor negotiations with WRPPA and IAFF. Item six, a committee may adjourn in closed session or may return to open session and may consider the approval of successor labor agreements with WRPPA and IAFF. The committee did not return to open session. Item seven was adjournment, the meeting adjourned in closed session at four fifty-seven PM.
Counsel, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion by Delaney, seconded by Katna. Dennis? Okay. All right, motion by Delaney, seconded by Katna. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes eight As to zero Nays. Item D, Legislative Committee meeting held March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Katna.
Thank you. A meeting of the Legislative Committee was held on Tuesday, March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five at five thirty PM in the council chambers. Item one was called to order. I called the meeting to order at six PM. I believe that was at five thirty PM. I want to correct those minutes, but all members were present. Item two, discuss proposed provisions of chapter twenty-five of the municipal code, specifically sections twenty-five dot zero one, animals not to run at large, prohibited animals, dangerous animals. Twenty-five dot oh two, barns, kennels, stables, pig pens, or other enclosures. Twenty-five dot oh three, dog and cat regulations. Twenty-five dot oh four, control of rabies and biting dogs or cats. Twenty-five dot oh five, exemption exemption permit. And twenty-five dot oh seven, enforcement, investigation, and penalty. There's motion by Katna, seconded by Delaney to bring this matter back to the next Legislative Committee for further discussion. Motion carried three zero. Item three, discuss a proposed city ordinance allowing residential block parties by permit. It was agreed to bring this matter back to the next Legislative Committee meeting for further discussion. Item four was adjourned. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Austin, motion carried three zero. Meeting adjourned at six forty-eight PM.
All right. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve with the amendment that the meeting was called to order at five thirty PM.
Got a motion by Katna, seconded by Pence, go over. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes eight As, zero Nays. Item eleven, reports of other committees, commissions, boards, and department reports are all on file. Please read them as soon as possible. Item twelve, referrals to committees. No referrals. Item thirteen, the council may go into closed session under section one nine point eight five, paragraph one, paragraph E, Wisconsin statutes, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties to the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the council will discuss negotiation and bargaining strategies regarding the labor negotiations with WRPPA and IAFF and may discuss terms of successor labor agreements with WRPPA and IAFF.
Motion to go into closed session.
All right.
Yeah, I didn't know if you, because when you went through HR by agreeing to it all, I didn't know if you meant that meant that you didn't want to go into close on the negotiation piece. Okay, yeah, all right, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
Okay, so I got a motion by Ven- Venom, seconded by Pluist to go into closed session. Go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes eight As to zero Nays, we are now moving into closed session.